Alrighty, everyone. I have 3:45. So, welcome to Teresa from H.R. Green Council, everyone. Just quickly, talking about this subject for a long time. 1965 just draws attention, right? And everything in between. And people asked this council and this staff and this city to do something, and we found someone to do it. And here they are telling us what they think we should consider. So this is a historic moment, Davenport. And Ms. Gleason, it's yours.
All right. Thank you so much. So, over the last 18 months, we've had several updates, and we're very pleased to have come to this point in the project. And H.R. Green's been a great partner. And we've really enjoyed working with them. Just kind of for today, we won't be getting into super detailed project-level information, because otherwise, we probably would be here till midnight, and I don't think anybody wants to do that. We do have the next cycle targeted for the acceptance. So basically, from now until November 23rd, we have plenty of time to talk about it. If you do have specific questions, feel free to set up a meeting with me, or Clay, or Brian, and we can go through some of that finer detail if we need to. But Teresa is planning to run through a complete presentation, which should take somewhere around 35 minutes, and then leave it open for questions. So, thank you so much.
Sounds wonderful. Teresa, good to see you again.
Okay. Great. Great to be back. And welcome to this final presentation on the development of the Mississippi River Flood Resiliency Plan. A quick recap here, just to start out. The consulting team has been working since last August to assist the city in developing a plan that will improve resiliency, increase operational efficiency during flood events, and enhance transportation routes when the Mississippi River is flooding. We did this by engaging with the public, stakeholder groups, and city staff, reviewing the city's current flood operations plan, reviewing the transportation detour routes, evaluating a variety of mitigation strategies and options, gathering feedback throughout the process, and finally pulling this all together into the plan that I'm going to present today. As I mentioned, engaging with the public and stakeholder groups was an important part of this process. We did this in several waves. First, gathering perceptions about flooding, then presenting alternatives and gathering feedback on those alternatives, and finally gaining confirmation on the ideas that we are presenting. Despite the pandemic, we were able to have meaningful engagement with a wide variety of individuals over the course of the year, utilizing small group interactions, online meetings, media airings, and online and paper surveys. And working with input from the public and with city staff, we've put together these set of four guiding principles that we reference when developing the flood resilience concepts for the city. And those are resilience, operations, equity, and public access. As we've gone over the concepts and strategies in prior presentations, today I'm going to jump right in to the plan recommendations and cover that for the rest of the presentation here. The first thing to note about the plan is that it offers both incremental and transformational recommendations. It's a combination that incorporates the diversity of perspectives about flood mitigation, and it fits within the context of the city's stated goals. It respects the city's history of living with the Mississippi River, and it works with prior planning studies along the riverfront. Many of the recommendations can be scaled, which allows the city flexibility to adjust to constraints or opportunities as they arise in the future. And finally, there's a balance of structural and non-structural mitigation recommendations that combine policies and programs that address individual flood risk with public investment in flood resilience infrastructure. We're going to start with the non-structural mitigation recommendations, which we can look at in falling into four main categories. The first is a property acquisition program. This program would target properties for acquisition that are located in the floodway, that are repetitive lost properties, that were identified during the Silver Jackets Project and assessed for their flood risk and mitigation alternatives, and those that have access challenges during flooding events. The benefits of acquiring targeted properties would include removing owners from that ongoing risk that they face, and also reducing city effort to furnish services in flood-prone areas. The second recommendation targets flood mitigation for individual buildings. When considering private structures vulnerable to flooding, we recommend that the city establish a public-private partnership program that would be a cost-share program between the city and individual building owners to address the residual risk that remains even after other infrastructure improvements remain, are made. We're utilizing here the results of the Silver Jackets assessment. And it, you know, this sort of program would encourage private owner responsibility for flood risk, and again, balance the private and public investment in resiliency. Individual building mitigation would also apply to public facilities along the riverfront to reduce flood-fighting efforts that the city currently undertakes to protect the public investments. The third non-structural recommendation is to update the city's stormwater master plan. This is especially important behind any of the proposed above-ground mitigation infrastructure to address the risk that happens from interior drainage when rainfall events happen. It would also look to improve stormwater handling in general and reduce pumping requirements. A comprehensive stormwater improvement strategy can have multiple benefits, including opportunities for green space and improved water quality. And finally, there are a number of additional programmatic recommendations. Improving the city's CRS rating would not only build additional flood resiliency, but it also had the benefit of reducing flood insurance policy premiums citywide. Updates to building codes, ordinances, and zoning that address flood risk are other tools that the city could use to encourage flood mitigation and flood-resilient decision-making. Requiring any groups that receive public funding from city programs to perform flood mitigation is another tool that the city can use. Finally, we're recommending that there is some further study on the inland creeks and streams. Those are sources of flooding risk themselves. And one example of this would be a watershed study for Black Hawk Creek to look at both the risk of flash flooding from that flooding source, but also to identify potential solutions to ongoing erosion and sedimentation issues in the creek. Moving on to the structural recommendations, I first want to outline the criteria that we considered when developing the recommendations for the height and alignment of structural elements. First is the city of Davenport's historical precedent and living with the Mississippi River. Davenport is unique. Unlike other river communities, you have not built large levees, large flood walls in the past. Instead, you've had an approach that prioritized river access and riverfront connectivity. Over the approximately nine-mile riverfront, the city has balanced this access and visual connectivity, and with a combination of retreat, mitigation, and flood fighting, has responded to the periodic Mississippi River flood events. The city's three-pronged approach has historically been focused on retreat and non-structural mitigation along most of the riverfront, with flood fighting only in a limited basis to maintain access along key public rights away. A second element was the result of the public engagement process. The recurring theme of the public engagement process was really the diversity of opinions that were expressed. Some people, individuals, and groups expressed strong preference for the status quo, that the city should continue its connectivity to the river and continue to flood fight on only a limited basis. Other individuals expressed a strong preference for very transformational changes, like large flood walls along the river. Still, others expressed preferences for a range of options in between that spectrum. Everyone offered support for their preferences with a wide range of arguments and reasons, but more broadly, the themes that emerged and that helped us define the four guiding principles for the plan. Taking those guiding principles, we applied them when we put together the recommendations for structural infrastructural recommendations. The next category is the stage frequency history on the Mississippi River. So we looked at the historical gauge data, and not only over the complete period of record back to 1878, but also in the last 20 years. And some things that we noticed is that the river has only exceeded stage 22 for 18 days in that total record, but seven of those days occurred since 2000. Again, the river has exceeded stage 18 for 273 days in the total record, and 142 of those have been in just the past 20 years. Looking at both this, the highest flood crests that were reached, and also the frequency that these larger flood events have been occurring in the more recent past went into the decision-making. Although a detailed cost-benefit analysis was not a part of the scope of this study, we did review in a more simplified manner project costs to the number of impacted properties and the impacted transportation routes. That helped us select what elevation and what location for the alignment made sense. And finally, the existing infrastructure. And in particular, I want to point out the existing seawall elevation here. Based on the best available information we have, we believe the lowest point of the existing seawall in East Davenport upstream of the Arsenal Bridge and upstream of the dam is between stage 22 and 23. Increasing the height of that wall would be difficult and expensive given its age and its length of about two miles. And so, if we're looking at equity along the entire riverfront, that existing piece of infrastructure played into this decision-making. So selecting the anticipated height of structural mitigation of stage 22 and the proposed alignment for structural elements attempts to strike this balance of living with the river, but making living with the river a little bit easier. And by doing so, we are trying to adopt an equitable approach along the riverfront. At this point, I'm going to go through at a high level the structural mitigation recommendations for each area. Again, I'm not going to get into all the deep details. You guys were provided a copy of the plan that dives into some more of the details, but just to give you an overview. So, starting in Area 1, in the Village of East Davenport, and then down to the Arsenal Bridge, some of the key takeaways for this area where the storm sewer systems are really the first source of flooding. And so, water in the river is backing up through the pipes and out onto the roadway, and that's the source of the first flooding that's experienced here. That flooding onto the roadway closes East River Drive and hinders transportation all along the east side of Davenport. That lack of east-west connectivity across the city is detrimental to the East Village businesses. And portions of East River Drive from approximately Federal Street to the Arsenal Bridge lie within the regulatory floodplain. So that puts some constraints on the different types of options that we can look at from a permitting and regulatory standpoint. The structural recommendations for Area 1 include separating storm sewer intakes above and below the height of the seawall into separate systems. We're going to allow the storm sewers from the uplands, the higher areas, to drain right to the government box and install backflow prevention on the storm sewer systems that are low-lying to prevent that river water from backing up and flooding out the street. This may require some infrastructure improvements to the existing storm sewer system. We have already been helping the city in televising some of those systems to assess their condition. Some more of that work will need to be done as part of the design. The underground work is not showing up on these maps just because it produces a lot of lines that's hard to distinguish, but those details were included in the overall plan that you received in the mapbooks. I can let you know that this includes storm sewer systems near River and Third, Fourth, Oneida, and Mound. All the sources of inland flooding right now. The next recommendation is to raise East River Drive in the vicinity of Mound Street from approximately stage 19.6 up to 22, again, allowing that to remain open until higher flood stages and avoid having to close the road. The plan is to leverage the existing seawall, which is sort of a sort of de facto flood wall and holding waters back, and to tie into high ground at locations where that can be done. As we then recommend constructing permanent pump stations where needed to pump those low-lying areas where we're putting in backflow prevention, so that when it rains, we can evacuate water and not flood the roadway. Had these recommendations been in place since 2000, the city would have avoided the need for flood response for 181 days. So about half a year's worth of folks out there putting up detour signs, installing pumps, trying to close gates, that kind of thing. In addition to the reduction in flood fighting effort required, the recommended strategies will maintain access between downtown Davenport, the East Village, and Bettendorf along East River Drive to stage 21 or 22, depending on when the city feels that safely needs to close the road. Instead of that, closure occurring right now about stage 17. So that's quite a bit of difference, closing the roadway at 17 versus 21, 22. Having consistent stormwater gate structures and permanent pump stations, especially if those are automated, will dramatically reduce the labor effort currently required to deploy, maintain, operate, and then decommission temporary pumps on-site. Raising East River Drive at Mound Street also provides some opportunities to improve the experience of arriving at and entering the East Village. There may be some retaining walls near the intersection where some signage or artwork could be placed to invite folks into the village. Reconstruction of the road could also incorporate a more pedestrian-friendly approach from the river, the Channel Cat stop, up into the businesses on Mound Street. These experience improvements would help address some of the priorities that are already in the Village of East Davenport's master plan, which identified that intersection as the primary gateway to the village and for creating and improving pedestrian connection to the riverfront. Moving downstream now to Area 2, which spans the riverfront between the Arsenal and Centennial Bridges. Some of the key takeaways here are that the city expends a significant effort of flood fighting within this area. Flooding occurs over portions of River Drive by stage 18. Riverfront park amenities are either flooded or, if not flooded, difficult to access during major flood events. The flood fighting that's done by the Canadian Pacific Railway has benefits for the city, and that track race that has occurred in the last couple of years here has created an additional visual barrier along this portion of the riverfront. Like in Area 1, we recommend separating storm sewer intakes above and below the line of defense into separate systems and allowing the storm sewers from high-upland areas to discharge directly to the river while constructing backflow prevention gates on storm sewer systems that are low-lying. The underground work here again is not shown, but it does include storm sewer improvements all the way from Iowa Street down to Gaines. We recommend raising Leclerc Street and Third Streets to improve access onto the Arsenal Bridge and defer the city's need to deploy temporary flood barriers or pumping until higher flood events. In preparation for building flood barriers and pumping along the proposed alignment, the city should reconstruct and realign any utilities that may be in the way of that. This might be sanitary, water, electric, telecom, et cetera, as we want to minimize the number of penetrations that would go through this line of permanent defense. Across Area 2, we recommend that the city construct a continuous elevated line of defense to stage 22 from the Arsenal Bridge abutment north of East River Drive along Bechtel Park, then crossing River Drive and following an alignment on the north side of the Canadian Pacific Railway. The line of defense includes several different types of elements. It has road closures across River Drive and at several of the north-south streets, and that permits access during non-flood conditions to the riverfront. Above-ground line of defense would consist of permanent flood walls in some locations, levees, the road closures, and the railroad closure. A combination of permanent and temporary flood wall sections may be employed in certain locations where views are a priority. Finally, we recommend constructing permanent pump stations to handle the interior stormwater and groundwater seepage. The pump station should only need to pump stormwater runoff in areas that lie below that line of defense elevation. Had these recommendations been in place since 2000, the city would have benefited from reduced flood fighting efforts for 195 days. So the recommended strategies in Area 2 will maintain access across downtown Davenport and in combination with projects to the east and the west, allow the use of River Drive and the public spaces north of the railroad until floods overcome that stage 22 line of defense. This represents a gain of about four feet of river stage compared to the current flood plan. Closures that impact access and significant access, really, you know, to the whole downtown area and a significant concentration of the city's cultural and community spaces. The alignment north of the railroad means that city staff will not need to cross back and forth across the tracks or be delayed by rail traffic when they're trying to make road closures or check gates or conduct other flood fighting activities. It also balances improvements in access and the use of the downtown public spaces with preserving floodplain for the river during these moderate to major flood events. Views along the riverfront trail remain open and unobstructed. Raising Leclerc Street will maintain access on and off the Arsenal Bridge to stage 22 without the need for flood fighting intervention by city staff. As in all the areas, consistent gate and pump station equipment, especially if automated, will dramatically reduce the labor effort in deploying, maintaining, operating, and decommissioning temporary pumps. And based on the way the alignment strategy is following the north side of the railroad tracks is broken up by the streets, it works well with the existing park plans for this area. The idea of a series of rooms that can be developed into unique park spaces. This hearkens back to River Vision and Main Street Landing design guidelines that have been previously put forth, including the surface parking lots that already exist, and also the opportunity for future park improvements between Brady and Harrison. This also incorporates ongoing work that's occurring at Union Station and provides defense in front of the Freight House and Florian Keane parking lots. I know several people are interested to see some sort of rendering and what this would look like here. So here are a few pictures of that, showing what if we put a flood wall along the existing parking lots at the east end here, what that might look like in that parking space. Again, I remind you that the height of this is approximately one foot above the railroad tracks. So not very tall, but about one foot above what's there already. And, you know, some ideas of how burms and walls can be incorporated together into the space and to make it a very nice public space. Moving downstream now to Area 3. This segment extends along the riverfront from the Centennial Bridge down to West River Drive near Howell Street. Some key takeaways from this area is that, again, the city and private property owners expend significant flood fighting effort in this low-lying area. Flooding, again, occurs over portions of River Drive here by stage 18. The flooding impacts the riverfront parks, and even though Rivers Edge was built up above quite high, you can't get to it because of the access issues from flooding. Access to the Marquette Public Works Facility is vulnerable, again, from flooding on the roadways. And there's already significant visual barriers between River Drive and the park space, but then it's fairly open in the park space if you go south of the tracks to the river. So the structural recommendations for Area 3 include, again, separating and constructing backflow prevention gates on the storm sewer systems, which in this area, again, are the first sources of flooding that flood out on River Drive well before water has come up through the parks. These include projects at Warren, Marquette, and Sturtevant to Division. Again, we would want to move and realign any utilities that would cross the line of defense to limit penetrations along that alignment. And then we would continue the alignment to stage 22, picking up where we left off to the east at the Centennial Bridge, on the north side of the tracks, all the way down to High Ground. And then, there's the High Ground that exists in Veterans Memorial Park where the side of the old landfill is. We would pick up the alignment again to the west of that with a crossing of West River Drive and then tying in again to High Ground. This line of defense includes road closures at Marquette Street and West River Drive that permit access during non-flood conditions. Above ground, again, this would consist of flood walls, levees, and road closures. Alternative alignments have been considered around the Marquette Public Works Facility, but they would require a gate across the railroad. And so, city staff has been meeting with railroad and discussing some of these alternates, and we'll see where that goes. A geotechnical analysis of the area around Veterans Memorial Park is needed to determine whether or not underground seepage mitigation elements are required along that former landfill area. Finally, again, in this area, we recommend constructing the new permanent pump stations for the interior stormwater and groundwater seepage and reconfiguring the existing Howell Street pump station for the new design conditions. Had these recommendations been in place, again, since 2000, the city would have benefited from reduced flood response, flood fighting effort for 195 days. In terms of benefits, the strategies will maintain access to higher flood stages along West River Drive from downtown to the west end, either via Howell or Marquette, and to numerous city facilities, including Rivers Edge, the Skate Park, the basketball courts, and the picnic areas north of the railroad tracks, rather than the current closures that begin to occur around stage 16. The alignment of the north side of the railroad tracks also means city staff would not have to cross back and forth to conduct flood fighting operations. And again, balances gains in access and transportation routes across the city with the use of public spaces and also preserving floodplain for the river during those moderate to major events. Views in the park area and along the riverfront trail remain open and unobstructed. Access is improved for the city to some of their facilities, such as Rivers Edge, which would be allowed to remain open more often. And the line of defense on the north side could be earth and levee. It could include trail to help with some pedestrian movement through this space. The plans also do not interfere with any of the proposals that have been made for improvements at Veterans Memorial Park, so those could move forward. Moving downstream now to Area 4. This includes the west end and Credit Island. Some key takeaways here is that the lack of regular preventive maintenance and inspection of the Garden Edition burms and the associated gates and pump station has been a longtime concern for the local residents living behind those facilities. Property buyouts did occur in the Garden Edition after the 93 flood, but there's little interest from homeowners this time for further acquisitions. The city expends significant effort, especially in the Garden Edition, with flood fighting actions. And those actions start as low as flood stage 13. So this is something that occurs very often. The flood infrastructure in the Garden Edition as well is relatively old and challenging for city staff due to the condition and lack of standardization. Commercial properties in this area along West River Drive and north of the tracks conduct flood fighting operations with some assistance from the city. And finally, West River Drive and the railroad, along with the lack of trails through this area, present some barriers between the neighborhood area and access to the riverfront. The structural recommendations for Area 4 include consolidating and reducing the current large number of storm sewer outfalls to the creeks and constructing standardized backflow prevention gates. It includes repairing the existing burms and adding an eastern closure around the Garden Edition, constructing a detention basin to collect stormwater runoff that would allow for the elimination of some more outfalls and reduce peak flows to the pump station. In the near term, we would recommend rehabilitating the existing stormwater pump station, but eventually replacing those with new pump stations for interior drainage and groundwater seepage. We've also recommended replacing the Credit Island causeway with a bridge at the entrance to the slough and reconstructing some existing gate valves on Credit Island that are in disrepair. Because this area is so low-lying, had these recommendations been in place since 2000, the city would have benefited on 857 days. The recommended projects in this area really repair the infrastructure that's already around the Garden Edition, shoring up those existing flood mitigation elements that are already in place. A permanent eastern closure will mitigate flood risks that come in overland flows that enter from the east. The projects will allow residents behind that flood mitigation to maintain their day-to-day activities during flood events. Consistent gate and pump station Consistent gate and pump station equipment, especially if automated here, will dramatically reduce the labor effort the city currently expends in flood fighting. Reconstructing the causeway with a bridge span and a higher opening will provide better flow and ecological benefits into the slough, but also reduce the city expense required to continually maintain and rebuild the causeway. There's a long-term opportunity in this area to also make recreational improvements that go along with these flood mitigation measures. Within the Garden Edition, Blackhawk Garden Park could be expanded, redesigned with sitting areas, walking paths, community gardens, those sorts of improvements. Along Blackhawk and Walnut Creeks, the improvements to the existing burms might open up the opportunity to incorporate walking trails and connections along the creek, which then could connect to a potential future riverfront trail extension south of River Drive. And for a Credit Island, improving the flow under the causeway can improve the ecological experience, the habitat, the water quality in the slough, and also open the door for recreational opportunities like boat launches for kayaks and improved habitat and, uh, nature viewing. These recreational and ecological improvements that could be worked into the flood mitigation are supportive of the goals identified in the River West Strategic Plan from just a year ago. That identifies strategic objectives, including improving access to Credit Island, improving water access for boating and fishing, creating ecotourism opportunities, and addressing trail improvements and connectedness across the city. We're back. So, as a brief summary of the costs involved here, and you all received in the appendices of the overall plan, more detailed cost breakdowns. But this table summarizes the recommended structural mitigation improvements I just walked through and shows the total project cost estimates. These project cost estimates include planning, design, and construction costs. So the total for all structural mitigation recommendations is 165.4 million. As you can see, that's spread out across the four areas that we just went through. So beyond the non-structural and structural mitigation recommendations, the plan also provides recommendations related to the implementation of the city's operational flood plan, the flood fighting efforts the city currently, um, employs. I think we'll have to take a short pause.
Ms. Gleason, do you anticipate this being fixed shortly? a while. One minute's cool. The ghosts of previous floods are inserting itself right now. Oh, yes, we, we need to get the clock fixed in the back, it's causing us concern up here If you wanna go out there? Yeah, yeah. So if there's a, if they wanna continue to fix them, are you good?
It looks, we're trying, if it, this doesn't work, we'll just go through the rest of it verbally without the slides.
Roger, okay. Something coming.
Okay, sorry about that. We're back in business. So the first recommendation is that the city needs to continue updating the flood fighting plan, you know, on an annual basis, so they need to have allocated staff time and budget to do this. They need to update the operation and maintenance that goes along with the infrastructure that's there, update and renew any agreements with private entities that maybe provide support to the flood fighting effort. And finally, update revise based on recent construction projects. Uh, the big sewer interceptor projects along the riverfront's a good example. There's some changes that should be made in the flood fighting plan based on changes that were made to the infrastructure. As you've heard me say several times when walking through the areas, there's need to standardize equipment and centralized controls that will reduce the amount of labor effort that needs to go into flood fighting. Right now, the existing gate valves that the city have are all unique. One of them, you turn clockwise 24 times, another one you turn counterclockwise 76 times. Having different types of infrastructure like this, especially infrastructure that's of different makes, is often aged and in disrepair, increases time, increases labor effort to do flood fighting. Standardized gate valves, adding automated closures, and a connected central system would improve response time and decrease by quite a bit the amount of labor effort involved. Gate valves that can be monitored, exercised, and open-closed remotely, you wouldn't have to send folks out to all these different locations, you could control them from one centralized location, again, less labor effort. And finally, having standardized equipment would reduce the training requirements necessary just to teach people what needs to be done and where. The next recommendation is to either retreat or floodproof all the impacted public facilities along the riverfront. A good example of this is when, uh, the Credit Island Lodge was made wet floodproofed, so that it could not be damaged or destroyed, but could withstand flooding after cleanup. Public facilities at risk require individual actions in the flood fighting plan right now, and so we recommend that, you know, removing, elevating, or floodproofing any electrical plumbing or other utilities. And then for planning and budgeting, that when any of these facilities have reached their useful life, considering whether they should be in the flood plain or should be moved out of the flood plain. One facility that comes to mind is the Marquette Public Works Facility, so a lot of flood fighting materials are saved there, but in an area that currently has access issues Okay. I'm gonna continue, I don't know why we're having the difficulties. I'll carry on. We also want to integrate flood operation plan actions into the current workflow software that Public Works uses. The plan is complex, and the scale of it necessitates transition to something that's more computer-based. We want to have not only work order management that specifies the execution and tasking of what needs to be done, keeping track of when activities are completed, but also to put all of this into a geospatial, GIS-type environment. That would help by visually tracking, be able to create maps, and have mobile applications in the field, so someone could pull up on a screen, see exactly where they're supposed to go, what they're supposed to do. So those are two technology improvements that we're recommending for deploying the flood action plan. It would also reduce the dependence on institutional knowledge to execute tasks, if all of this is documented in the city's current software. Finally, we want to, uh, recommend developing agreements with all partners that are involved in implementing the flood operations plan. There is coordination with several entities, and we would want to have those be formalized. Again, we want to reduce the dependence on institutional knowledge and long-term relationships and be able to execute tasks even with staff turnover. So one item that I want to address here is, uh, flood crests above the limits of this line of defense, floods that are higher than this mitigation that we've been talking about. And there's an old adage that there's always a bigger flood. And so unfortunately, things that are built and put into place could be eventually, you know, succumb to a future flood crest that's higher. But Davenport's three-pronged approach of retreat, floodproof, floodfight, cost-effectively prepares the city to deal, to deal with this inevitable future. There may be a larger flood, right? So it's vital that private property owners in the flood plain take responsibility for their flood risk, and the city can support this and their efforts through that public-private partnership that I mentioned earlier, that yes, the city is going to be putting in public infrastructure, it's going to try and keep transportation routes open, improve commerce across the city during flood events, but there's always residual risk, there's always the possibility of a higher flood. And working with individuals to address those risks is what we're recommending. The operational flood plan should continue to include provisions for actions above flood stage 22. It does right now, you know, it goes up to stage 26. But as you get to those higher and higher eventualities of floods, there's fewer and fewer actions, right? And it turns less from flood fighting into communication and safety. And so we recommend that, you know, at some point, actions may be of limited scope, like they are in the current plan, but they should focus on public communication and keeping everyone safe should that large flood event eventually come. From a technical perspective, if a structural, uh, flood mitigation elements are designed to ultimately take temporary flood fighting measures on top of them, and this is something that we've discussed with a number of you, could we add something on top of, of an elevation of a berm, for example? Could we add something to get a little bit higher? That should be decided early on, what that plan is going to be, because that goes into your design criteria for all these permanent elements. When you're talking about storm sewer, when you're talking about separation pumping requirements, you need to know that, yes, we maybe have permanent protection to 27, or to 22, but maybe we wanna have temporary to 23 or to 24. And so that needs to be decided early on from a technical perspective as you're designing, you don't wanna go back and have to change things later. The next area that we looked at was transportation recommendations. The first recommendation regarding transportation is to establish a standard flood detour route. Right now, the incremental nature of the flood operations and response plan means that detour routes change pretty often as, you know, the river level's going up or down. These changes to the detour routes, you know, can confuse motorists, can cause more heartache for city staff who has to go out and put out signs and change detour routes that needs to communicate out to the public what the detour routes are going to be. So we recommend, you know, setting an established flood detour route. And without going into a lot of detail here, especially since I don't have a map to show you right now, is that once the phase one structural mitigation improvements are completed, the city will be able to keep West River Drive open much longer without having to detour traffic north, and East River Drive will be open from Third and Fourth Streets all the way to the East Village and into Bettendorf until that seawall is overtopped. So those phase one improvements that I'm gonna get into in just a minute will drastically reduce the number of detour changes that need to occur during a flood event. The other thing related to transportation that I wanna mention is that we recommend the city prioritizes street repairs along the detour routes. And we looked at the condition of the pavement along those detour routes, and, uh, many of them were in poor to fair condition, and, um, probably some of it is associated with the pavement maybe not being designed for the level of traffic it takes during a detour and those loading conditions. So we recommend prioritizing those street repairs and accounting for those estimated traffic loads, uh, that occur during a flood event. Now that I've summarized the recommendations, I wanna move into how do we actually implement this plan? So the implementation portion of the plan provides city staff, the public, and the elected officials three main components. The first is a framework that prioritizes structural and non-structural flood mitigation projects as objectively as possible. It divides those projects into a comprehensive list that have, uh, sub, been subdivided into smaller pieces, uh, that are manageable, that are at logical stop and start points, that are fundable projects, and that can be designed and built to form the overall plan. The third item it gives is a timeline to implement the projects to avoid unnecessary costs of going back and forth. It's a logical progression of how the projects should be put together. The implementation plan includes three phases. The first phase of projects are incremental solutions that maximize the flood mitigation benefit of existing infrastructure and programmatic investments. They fix, improve, or enhance existing flood mitigation infrastructure and the current city flood response operations. They require less than 10 years to implement, and the cumulative costs are in the tens of millions of dollars, not the hundred millions of dollars. These phase one projects will address existing deficiencies in the flood response and infrastructure that are impacted at the lower flood stages. So these are the, uh, elements that have the most common need for use at, at the lower river levels. And so these low to moderate floods that occur much more frequently and over a much longer duration are the ones that the phase one projects, um, will address. The phase two projects are more these transformational full system build-out projects. They increase the level of defense to stage 22 along large sections of the riverfront, and they are a combination of those large-scale camp, capital, you know, intensive structural elements that we went through along that alignment. They require more time to implement, um, and in terms of logical progression, the underground system should be constructed prior to the above-ground systems, as you would expect. As that phase two, um, as those phase two elements are being built out, though, temporary connections can be made to high ground, so they are always gaining benefit with each new piece that's added in. that's added in. The phase three projects really increase the resiliency and simplify operations of the fully-built system by providing that permanent automated pumping that we've talked about. We've identified 14 stormwater outfall locations for pumping. The required pump capacity of those locations will be reduced by doing that separation and backflow prevention that we talked about in the earlier areas. And the city can continue during this entire process to operate the temporary pumps prior to getting to phase three. And actually, that experience may, you know, give some insight into the level of service, how large of pumps you may want for those areas. The pump capacity could be built in parallel with the phase two projects, or it could come later. And again, you know, permanent pumping really is about reducing labor effort, providing that standardization, that central control. So the first steps for structural implementation, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that these recommendations that we've been working on and talking about here are based on planning level data. And they need to be refined during the design process. And things may need to be tweaked a bit, you know, once we have survey and hydraulic models and river models and things like that. An inspection of the existing infrastructure, which I mentioned, has begun already. So three critical tasks to point out are: survey of all key infrastructure elements, including along this proposed alignment; a river modeling study that would look at the impacts of building in the floodplain, this line of defense to 22, both upstream and downstream, and setting those elevations all along the riverfront for the design; and then hydraulic modeling studies of these storm sewer systems, especially where they connect into the government box. And that element of the hydraulic study, the storm sewer, is something that can be done as part of the design process. So implementing phase one, again, these are those projects that offer that immediate return on investment. The first thing is implementing some of those non-structural programs that we talked about, looking at targeted acquisitions, looking at the private-public partnership, and implementing updates to the stormwater master plan, the CRS rating, some of those programmatic things that the city can do that increase resiliency and get some of the benefits immediately. Several projects in phase one are projects that have actually been identified in previous studies, including rehabilitation of the existing stormwater pump stations and rehabilitation of the Garden Edition berms. And we agree, those are projects that have already been looked at, those should just be done. Finally, projects that really increase the transportation access at these low to moderate flood events, like raising East River Drive at Mound, keeps the east side of Davenport open. So these are those projects that have immediate impact. Doing all the backflow prevention along River Drive, where we're getting flooding that occurs at stage 16, stage 18, et cetera, keeps those points of transportation open. So one example of a phase one project, just to give you an example, is to install backflow prevention along East River Drive between Third Street and Tremont. In 2019, you may recall, East River Drive is closed. It was completely flooded out with water, even though the land between East River Drive and the river was completely dry. Again, this is backflow through the storm sewer systems. So doing the storm sewer improvements, that would be able to remain open until the seawall was overtopped. That's an example of a phase one project. It's very defined in area and in its outcome. Implementation of phases two and three, these are those projects along the alignment, along the riverfront, need to happen in a logical manner. And so you need to start at one end, you need to do underground work before you do above-ground work, and then you move on to the next area. You don't want to do some work here, and then some work here, and some work here, because you want to get the benefit of what you're building and be able to tie into ground and always adding on to the benefit that you're achieving. Final part of the plan, if you guys made it all into, you know, the page 100s, 200s in reviewing it, is the funding strategies. And so I don't want to get into that a lot here because it's hard to get into numbers and tables and programs, but I did want to mention that in terms of funding strategies, we've looked at federal, state, and local funding opportunities. We've also made suggestions matching individual projects with best-fit opportunities for funding. And we've also pointed out that a dedicated city funding stream is really required to sustain some of the recommended mitigation programs and for the current and future operation and maintenance of the flood infrastructure. So in summary, the flood resiliency plan is a balanced approach. It can be phased over time and can use multiple funding strategies. It meets the communities' and cities' stated goals. It supports the existing riverfront park and land uses. It maintains the city's relationship with the river and connection to the river. It can be scaled to accommodate future needs, future constraints, and funding opportunities as they arise. It offers both those incremental and transformational recommendations. It's a phased approach that can leverage multiple funding strategies to incrementally build flood mitigation, and it balances public investment and individual responsibility to increase flood resiliency. Reducing flood risk is a journey. This plan serves as a roadmap and gives the city a cost-effective plan to reduce flood risk and live out the community's continued commitment to living and working along the Mississippi River. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green, for the somewhat detailed briefing there. So we'll go, and for the first round, I'll keep everybody to three minutes, and then we'll see where we're at, and then we'll, if we need, if we go again. So I see, I see the things are identified by seats, not names, so I'm pretty sure I know where everybody is. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I have a question for Nicole. The plan mentions a comprehensive stormwater plan. Do we have one of those?
So we actually do, we have several different stormwater plans that are various ages right now. So we are working with the core on kind of an entry-level study right now to pull some of those plans together and see where our holes are. So you will likely see something in the future, two to three-year CIP that includes more of that, yes.
Okay, because it mentions that there is one and depends, this study depends on it.
Yeah, and these are some older ones, so we're trying to take some of those older ones and actually put them together in a larger picture.
Okay, so my primary point I want to make, I've read the whole plan, I've tied it, that's a great map, thank you, Public Works, for putting that together, and H.R. Green. It really helped me understand the plan. But I found that the most important pages in this plan are 104 and 105. These are the key. Because in it, and you mentioned them, but it says that we have, prior to beginning implementation of phase one, the city must complete several critical tasks. It's not a should or a may, it says a must, to make this work. The survey of all the key infrastructure, including roadways, storm sewer systems, topography, utilities, and on top of the seawall upstream of Arsenal Bridge, a river modeling study to identify impacts of the structural recommendations on water surface profiles, and to set the design level of defense and elevation units along the nine miles of riverfront. The third one, a hydraulic modeling study of the relationship between the flow, downstream and upstream pool elevations, and connected stormwater systems. This is pretty critical studies that you're saying must be done before we start doing anything structural or non-structural. And then on page 117, it talks about, we really need to look at ongoing and future O and M costs as we do that. So down under 9.2, it says, "Most anything can be modified except for two things." And I need you to explain this, Teresa, for me, okay? The design level of defense, total height, permanent plus any anticipated temporary structures, and the alignment of the line of defense. Because it says, if you do a project at one level, and then we identify another level as key, then those other ones are not going to work very well, the first ones we put in. Could you please explain what you're talking about here?
Yep, so the design criteria, you would design, you know, the foundation of a flood wall, right? To be a certain height, a certain weight, and, you know, resist the force of a certain height of water. It's expensive to go back and retrofit that, right? So that's why I'm talking about where you don't want to change that design elevation after you start building those physical elements, especially those above-ground elements. Another item is where you locate something like a backflow prevention gate. You want that to be near your proposed alignment, you know, that line of defense. You don't want it to be a block on the wrong side either way. So that's what I'm talking about, is that once you set that height and that location, it's costly to go back and change that.
So I did not-
Last question.
Okay, I did not see any costs in the plan for the survey of key infrastructure, river modeling study, hydraulic modeling study, and this design level of defense. Do you have any idea what those would cost before we can start anything else, considering we've already voted on doing some other things on the ground?
Yep, and I've had some of those discussions with city staff here about that. Things like survey and the stormwater modeling are usually done as part of that planning and design of individual projects. So those costs are kind of built into each of those individual projects. A river modeling study is probably $100,000 or less, something like that. It's basically taking the existing river model, adding in these proposed elements, and viewing what the impacts of those are.
So we're talking about $500,000 total, maybe?
So I can, so yeah, I think, so what she's saying is-
Last point.
Yeah, some of these, some of those projects, like that engineering work is part of the project, so it's not a wholesale, you can't execute a single project without that. Like, some of those projects, especially the underground projects, as you execute each project, you are, you're correcting those things as you go.
Okay, because that's not what the plan says, that prior to implementation of phase one, you have to do these things. So that's how I read it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to the next person, then we'll see if we come back. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank H.R. Green and our staff for putting all this together, you know. Started out when we had all these meetings and stuff, and the way you guys took and listened to everybody's concerns. But I think for me, this plan, you know, it says it right on page 105, it says, "Also known as the fix what's broken and prepare for the future phase." To me, that's key. We've got a lot of things out that have been broken and broken for years, and we need to get them fixed before we start anything else. So I am glad to see that's in the plan. I'm really excited to see that we put in there a little bit of money for, or a project for reconditioning the pumps, because one pump that we have down the Garden Edition is a 1965 Gorman Root pump, and it's not very reliable. So I'm glad to see that, and thank you very much for all your work.
Okay, thank you. Alderman-Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Manson. I guess my one question or takeaway would be, what is a realistic timeline, I guess, for next steps, and what does next steps look like, you know, assuming we accept it next council cycle? You know, all these studies and still having to do engineering work, and I know we're kind of taking it in bites, I guess, but I kind of had a thought that the study that we were doing, we would get more of a actionable plan, I guess you could say, and so this seems more just kind of like a roadmap, so what are those next steps? And when are they taking place, and what's maybe realistic for actually tackling some of our flooding issues and problems we have in the city?
Nope. So as Teresa's been saying, this is the roadmap that guides us. I would say, pending a city council exception of the plan, there are a lot of the programmatic elements that we can start working on, some of, you know, putting together a public-private partnership, determining what that looks like, looking at what other communities have successfully proposed and how it works with our community, looking at some ordinance changes. All of those things are things we can be doing over the winter, once, or if the city council accepts the plan from a structural component, then we're talking budget, which is exactly the time of the year that we're currently in. So, I mean, later this week, you're going to get the city's, or the city staff's proposed CIP without any funding constraints applied to it, so you all can see and rank those as you do every year. A lot of these projects are in there, at least from a program standpoint. So you'll see a structural component, a public-private partnership component, looking at public facilities, buyout programs, like, that's all included within the city CIP as well. Part of that is determine how the budget goes, is how quickly some of those are implemented. There are also some federal programs that we're currently looking at now, certainly as everyone knows, the federal infrastructure bill that recently came out. There is some resiliency and some disaster-related things according to that, that we'll see what makes sense for the projects we have and what are the best foot forward we can put from some of those. So I certainly think there are some actionable steps for us to move forward if this plan's approved.
And I guess that's my only concern, is that I know city staff says all the time that we dictate how studies are implemented and how they go, but we've always spent a lot of money on studies, and we have plenty of studies out there for whatever various thing it may be around the city. And many times, getting those studies turned into actionable items seems to have some gaps and doesn't take a lot of time.
Last point.
Making sure we just find a way to turn this plan and study into actionable, tangible assets for the city is something that I think is important and something that we shouldn't lose focus on, so.
Thank you. Okay, Alderman-Jobson.
Thank you. Thank you again, Teresa, for your presentation and all the work your groups put in. Excuse me. I can't think of not accepting this when it comes before us. I, like Alderman-Dorman, also, kind of when we got into this, had this thought in my head that, you know, when we get to this date, right, here it is, here's the 10 things you need to do, and bam, we're going to, we're going to fund it and go forth however long it took, right? But then realizing that we'd have to kind of piece things in. My question for you, Clay, would be, going forward from a programmatic standpoint, maybe from a budgeting standpoint, would it be easier to have an item that just says flood mitigation phase 22, you know, phase 22 build out, and then within that, certain things? I mean, if we have, you know, if we, if we come to a consensus and say, hey, we want to, we want to build things out, you know, underground, above ground, to 22 feet, and within that are 100 different things that we got to do, each of varying costs. If we've got 100 projects in front of us that says, you know, this flood, you know, you know, pump at Federal and Third, or River Drive in here, and, you know, we're all ranking all these different things, and they kind of compete against each other as we're ranking, I was just wondering if it'd be easier to just have one, one line item in the CIP that encompasses everything, so we as a group, you know, we have that understanding of, hey, this is to fight floods at 22 feet. Good, rank it high, and away we, away we go. So I don't know if that's something that could be done.
I think that's a great idea. And so that's actually what's going to be proposed to you later this week. So, you know, I, you know, I think it's fantastic. But like I said, we'll have it broken down. Once again, this is before we apply any type of fiscal constraint, just to gauge the city council's reaction, and against other city initiatives that are out there. But one of the things is breaking it down by those programmatic elements. So there is a structure, there is a one-line item, kind of how we do lining or high-volume street repair, that there's a bucket. And so there will be one bucket that says structural recommendations that goes directly to what Teresa's been talking about. There's another one that's non-structural, another one for buyouts. So regardless of how the city council and the mayor kind of direct us, those are general buckets, and then from there, we will then pick the projects from here. And depending on what that dollar figure is, I imagine what we'll do is, once we get to our January budget meetings, we'll then start talking about what those individual projects are within the budgets that we have in those buckets.
Cool.
Last point.
I'm glad you're positively rubbing off on me then, if I'm thinking that way. My other thing was, you know, obviously, when you hear $165.4 million, that's something that sticks in my head. Question, in the last 20 years, what have we spent fighting floods? You know, all these days where we're, what's that item? Could that maybe be presented next week, or if we have it right now?
It's something that we can look at and get it to before this becomes on the council agenda.
Thanks.
Thank you. Interesting. All right. Thank you. Alderwoman McGuinness.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things, and I'll say all my questions, and then I'll ask them if I don't hear them answered. The first one, I have three. The first one is, is anything in this study impact- The first one is, is anything in this study impact, or put a pin in, any sort of major projects we have over the next two or three years, or any of our ARPA projects that we've designated ARPA dollars to? So, that's one question. Is it going to slow that process down? Number two is, you talked a little, Teresa, about, and I think I interpreted it, so if we're building a berm at 22, which is what this, we're looking at, we need to also say, what does it need to be if we have to stack two more feet of HESCOs on top of it, correct? So, do we have any estimate of those additional costs? Is building a berm at 22, for 22, different than building one at 22 that can take a field HESCO to protect it to 24? That's, that's one, that's the second question. And then the third one, and this is just a technical question, but, Clay, the link that you gave us to get, to pull this very big document down, is that on the city's website? In other words, can I send that out to Third Ward and say, if you want to see the study, you can download it here? Would that be a good link? So, I don't answer them in whatever order he'd like.
So, for, if you don't want me to take the, try and take a couple, so, the first one, does, does these projects impact current projects, or projects that are funded through ARPA? I would say no, they don't impact them, so I'll use a couple of key examples. I can't think of anything in the current CIP that this, this plan would stop from occurring. I would look at improvements to River Heritage Park and Veterans Memorial Park. Those things can continue to move forward, as we've all thought about and all planned. In terms of ARPA, down at Main Street Landing, that is south of where these improvements will take place, and so, therefore, it's fine to continue. The number three would be, gosh, I didn't write number three down, but, the link, let me check with our IT department, that was one that's, to make sure that's not an internal secure link, but let me check, and I'll get back to you fairly quickly. If not, we'll put it on a public one, because it is a big, big document in terms of being able to download. The second question was a post-22 plan, that is something that we have talked about, it's something we're going forward. One of the things that we'll need to decide, once, I think, in my, in my opinion, is once we get to that point of Phase Two, which Phase Two is all our above-ground work, is also talking a little bit how we all feel as a community about the look and feel. So, the flood wall, for instance, is proposing in a couple of select locations, we have a width of about, or a footprint of about two and a half feet, that gets you about a foot of additional sandbags per U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, so if we're continuing following their guidelines, which is what we do with our current stuff, that gets you an extra foot of height on there. For berms, they, it basically goes, how big of a footprint do you want it to go? We could have a berm that has 10 feet, where you can stack, you know, basically, on the top of it's 10 feet wide, you can stack however much things you want to on top of it, but the footprint from a three-to-one slope, you're talking a massive amount of space. Or do we want something that is fairly tight, that does have room for something? There's also different technologies, I'm sorry, outside of HESCO barriers that we can look at, there may be more compact, and that's something that we're continuing to evaluate, and we will, once it comes to that, that portion.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
Thank you for the presentation, and after a flood that really shook the city and sort of reset the deck from us, for us, we, we committed to funding this plan, and here we are, and I'm grateful that this is a plan that seems to understand and reflect the relationship that the city has with the river, both good and bad, and understands the financial commitment that is being put before us. It's a holistic effort, and it's going to take time, and it's a little bit scary as we try to stand this up, both in the task that's ahead of us, and, you know, Davenport's not just another city in the state of Iowa, you know, our identity and our soul is aligned with the Mississippi River, so it feels like an important responsibility to make sure that as we alter that, it still, it still reflects who we are as a community. But I, I think reassured that some of my colleagues' concerns seem to be similar to mine, that as we put this in action, that we find a way to be deliberate and stay the course over multiple councils and multiple budgets, because that's really what it's going to take. And some of the inquiries seem to be similar to mine, in the sense that, like, how do we, how do we protect ourselves from ourselves to not relitigate each of these items every time they come before us, and really looking to find a level of confidence with this flood plan that becomes another pillar in our city's, city council's responsibilities of making sure that when people look back at the actions that we took here, they're able to say that at a time where climate was changing, and our relationship with the river was changing, we took the necessary actions to protect ourselves and, and maintain the soul of the city. So, I'm nervous, but really happy with the direction that, that we're moving. So, thank you for everything you've done for us.
Thank you. Alderman Gropch.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also wanted to thank you for your efforts and your work, and I think you proved us right, that we selected the right firm to do this project, and I'm really happy with the product that you've given us here. So, I like the, like the way you phrase this, retreat, floodproof, and floodfight. And we've, we've got to approach flood mitigation with all three of those, those tools, and then, permanent, permanent, up to 22 feet, and then operational provisions above 22 feet. So, the plan doesn't stop at 22. Operationally, we know that if there's projected floods over 22, that we have operational ways to deal with that. I think that's important. It's important that the public realizes that, and that the permanent protection is to one level, and then the, the operational protection can go as high as we need it to go. To a certain point, we know that, you know, if we get a 27-foot flood, at that point, there's not a whole lot we can do. Probably the thing that I like most about this is there is a sequential roadmap to how you do this. So, Phase One is the immediate impact projects, where whether we do anything else or not, this is going to improve the system that we currently have with HESCOs, but also, it's a precursor to any over-the-top protection that you do. So, really, here's, here's your first 10 projects in Phase One. If you do these, then you need to make the decision to enter into Phase Two, because what we just heard is essentially, once you enter into Phase Two, that is a very permanent solution that you're putting, a permanent and expensive solution that you're putting into place. And then, of course, Phase Three seems to be quite a bit of the, the pump stations. Once you have the over-top, over-the-top protection, you've got to be able to pump that water back over the, over-the-top protection that you've built. So, we have a roadmap, we have a strategic way to go about this, we need a commitment from this council, and the community, and future councils, that, you know, once you get out of Phase One into Phase Two, you have to be committed to the plan that we have in place. And then, of course, community partners, other government entities, state officials, federal officials, this will not get done without the funding help of our friends at the state of Iowa, and in the federal government, our congressional delegation. We've got to work together to figure out how to fund this. So, thank you, appreciate the effort.
Thank you. All right, coming back for a second round, half the time. Alderman Dorman.
Thanks, Mayor Manson, again, for the additional time. I guess my one question is, just with the lump-sum CIP project, and I guess it might make it a little easier, but how does staff, what is your plan for making sure that things stay equitable, or are we going that approach? Because even with the, the phases, even things within the phases, some are going to be easier wins than others, so if you have three easy wins in the Village of East Davenport, but in the Black Hawk Creek area, it's the hardest win you have, or are you going to say, well, we need, well, only do one in the East Village, because we have to be fair and equal to also do the one in the Black Hawk area? Are you just going easiest to hardest for the wins, or what's the thought process there of how to implement within the phases?
So, I think this kind of goes back to Alderman Gropch's comment, which is, these, these projects, especially phases, or the areas like 1, 2, 3, have a very different grant funding model, just because the, the cost benefits different, and the impact is different. So, a lot of our focus, especially with the dollars we program into the CIP, we're going to be aggressively looking at grants and grants that fit those different projects. So, I think a lot of the phasing is really going to be dependent upon what is, is grant fundable, and then, again, kind of what's going to give us the biggest cost-to-value benefit, and that will be a continuous conversation with the council.
And then, are we ever allowed to leave a phase if not everything in the phase is done, or how is that going to work? Because, again, though, I just don't want areas of the city to be left behind because they're hard, difficult, can't fund, problems that we have, that we face ourselves. And so, I, I like the approach of where there's money, get it done, because you don't know if that money will ever be in there again, but we also can't leave anyone behind, because we can't get the money, if that makes sense.
Right, and I think, I mean, I, some of those decisions, I think, are going to be five-to-10-year decisions, just because of the money that's going to be required. So, I think that as we work, as we start crossing the projects off the list, if we need to start reshuffling the deck as we do that, we certainly can.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So, a few comments. So, again, thank you, Teresa and Nicole, for working together, and teamwork here, and your team to bring, quite frankly, a historic, balanced, comprehensive plan to the city of Davenport. The folks in, since 1965, both citizens and others have asked to do something, and here this council, working with this staff and the, and the public input, are doing that. It brought you a plan that has a roadmap to get this flood mitigation system going with structural, non-structural events. Many different areas work with a purposeful plan, in each area specific to that area. The Corps of Engineers' plan complements this plan, that's, that's something that needs to be continually thought about, and, and this plan will help significantly reduce our city and flood-fighting efforts in personnel and equipment, and I love the good operational recommendations that you put in here. So, three phases, big challenge to staff to bring to us an organized mythology to the madness here, and then a big challenge to the council to, to continue, and future councils to continue to keep this, as, as many of my colleagues here have said, on the forefront. But, again, the balanced, comprehensive approach to do flood mitigation, I agree with my colleague Alderman Gropch saying, we, we obviously knew we picked a good firm, but boy, does this, you know, validate that. And I thank you for your work, I look forward to continuing to work with you, and the citizens should be proud, and now, as Alderman Condon says, the nervous anticipation as we move forward, that's what, that's the big deal here now. How do we get moving forward? But as Mr. Merritt said, in a week, we're going to see some, some things to think about. That's where this really goes. So, I hope the council accepts us when this comes to the agenda next cycle, and then that really will be the, the key to get moving. So, anyone else? Thank you very much for your work, appreciate your time, and happy to have this.
Thank you.